The agenda for the meeting on the screen, can people see that?
Yes.
Very good, thank you Miranda. Well, by the clock on my computer, it is now 7pm. So I believe call this meeting of the Netherlands Board of Trustees to order at 7pm on Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. Miranda, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee Apt.
Here.
Mayor Prosem Baumhofer.
Here.
Trustee Danforth.
Present.
See Corvillan.
Yes, here.
And please note for the record that trustee Coombs is mile is absent.
Alright, thank you all, having a quorum, we will move forward with the agenda this evening and also just want to welcome, we have, I think this may be the most number of people we've had call into one of our virtual Board of Trustees meetings, so welcome, I see a lot of names on there I don't recognize, so it's exciting to have new people calling in. We have five items on the consent agenda, and before I ask for any questions from the board, I would like to notice note that are on this is a applicant for a vacancy on ProSAB, Brian Curtis, who is also dialed in, so Brian, would you just like to take a minute to introduce yourself virtually?
Sure, hi everybody, my name is Brian, I'm a relatively new resident of Netherlands, but a longtime Colorado resident. I'm also on the board of the Wild Bear Nature Center, and I saw this opening on ProSAB and thought it'd be a good way to get more involved in the community.
Well, thank, thank you so much for stepping up. Does any member of the Board of Trustees have questions or comments regarding any of the items on the consent agenda?
This is Julian, and I have a question for Brian Curtis. Brian, I'm looking at your resume, and what I'm trying to do is get a better feel for how that resume, which is very much about cable advertising, it's tied to helping people to better appreciate and use Ned's Parks Recreation and Open Spaces. I'm thinking that you could say a lot about this, it's just not written down in your business resume, and I'm wondering if you could give us a feel for what innovative solutions you've come up with that would apply in this position?
Yeah, sure, definitely, my professional resume is not very closely related to the types of things that ProSAB gets involved in. I did, I was on the call for the earlier working session where the Board of Trustees was talking about the response to the Envision 2030 questionnaire, and I think that one of the things that was highlighted that was a strength of Netherlands was its natural beauty, its access to the outdoors, and just the general sense of community. These are things that I all, and I enjoy myself, I think what I'd be interested in doing on ProSAB is kind of taking some of my general management background and organizational skills that I've developed on the job and apply them to kind of helping the community better enjoy its resources, of course, that's not directly related to technology or some of the things that I've gotten paid to do, but it is very closely related to stuff that I enjoy doing in my free time.
Thank you.
No worries.
Anyone else? If not, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Julian, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second from trustee Danforth?
Mayor, Mayor Prosem Baumhofer.
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. On two items of public comment, which have been entered into the record, but we would like to open this up to anyone from the public who would like to speak in person for three minutes, now is your opportunity on, on any item that were not, that's not on the agenda this evening. So if you would like to speak on something, please raise your hand or come off a mute and speak up.
I'm primarily here for the discussion on.
Sorry, sorry, who, just identify yourself so that, you know, virtually, I don't, who?
My name is Doug.
Can you hear me? Yes, yeah, yeah, please, your name, and are you a town resident or out of town resident?
I am a town resident and homeowner, I'm just calling about the issue regarding the changes on Peak View for some property changes.
Yep, that's one of the agenda items later.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else would like to speak on items that aren't on the agenda?
I'm not sure if you can hear me, can you hear me?
We can, hope, please go ahead.
Oh great, I'm Hope Jordan from Eldora, Colorado, and I've really enjoyed the work sessions prior to the meeting. They're very interesting and a lot of information. My thought was, I know that Netherlands area seniors is doing food delivery, so I'd just like to add the suggestion that maybe if surveys regarding Envision 2030 could go into the Netherlands area senior bags, so that we'd have some diverse input. And then my last comment is, is really interested in having all of the advisory board meetings and board meetings audio recorded. I know a lot of people move in and out and are on and off the different advisory boards, and I just feel that if there was an audio recording, that there'd be a full understanding of what took place during all the meetings. Thank you, and thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, Hope. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else coming off a mute or speaking up. We will move forward, thank you all. For hearing for the comments about the action items as we move into those. As we are doing now with our first, which is the appointment or reappointment of our town judge, Judge Thrower, David Thrower, and I believe I saw him on here as well.
I am here, can you hear me?
Welcome.
Nice to see you.
Do you want to give us just a quick introduction for those who are new to the board or who have not met you through the town courts?
I would be happy to. I have been serving the town of Netherlands as its judge for two years now. I currently serve as a presiding municipal judge in six different jurisdictions. I'm the incoming president of the Colorado Municipal Judges Association. I've been active on their legislative and planning committees. I'm currently their education chair, so I'm in charge of all of our continuing legal education. When I first was appointed in Netherlands, I came up to Netherlands on numerous occasions to meet with staff and adopt some, some best practices. Netherlands was very fortunate, and then judge that preceded me, Judge Gloss, had a tremendous amount of experience and did a great job. So it wasn't hard for me to step in and continue his practice. I, it's kind of hard to say, particularly in light of the last four months or so, what court is like. Netherlands has court once a month, and we generally will have been seeing 10 to 15 people per court session. That doesn't mean that other people haven't otherwise taken care of their matter in, in other ways, but the people that actually come to court are 10 to 15. More recently, it's been fewer than that for reasons I'll get into in just a second. Over those two years, I was trying to think this afternoon, how many trials I've done in Netherlands, my recollection is, I think it's around four, which is pretty typical, trials are somewhat unusual in municipal court, but they do happen. Since I took over, we updated some court forms and some procedures to comply with recent state legislation. Many of you may not know that municipal courts have come under scrutiny in, in the past four or five years due to some issues that happened in, in other jurisdictions. And as part of that, we've had to deal with changes to municipal court process and procedure. And I feel like we've done a good job, particularly with the input of the town prosecutor, whom you all are very lucky to have, her name is Abbie Rockland, she's been a joy to work with, is a very effective prosecutor, and part of the reason we don't have very many trials is she's a very fair prosecutor, and she sees sort of maybe what the best practice or the best outcome would be, and sometimes that's not always a trial. Occasionally, we do have juveniles in our court, and I've engaged in reviews with juvenile offenders on deferred judgments and prosecutions. Probably one of the most rewarding things I do as a municipal judge is try to divert people away from, from issues that they otherwise might not have. If, can cases have some interest, and I'll be thrifty with your time, I promise I'm coming to an end. The COVID situation has been impactful for courts. We lost two court sessions as a result of COVID, but we remained working extremely hard, trying to deal with defendants through the mail by doing please buy mail and other sort of creative ways to deal with their cases, so that our cases didn't backlog, but at the same time, we didn't have people coming to court in a situation that could be dangerous. As we've started to meet again in the past couple of months, I can't say enough about Netherlands PD and the, the Rangers who provide our security by implementing some protocols that I drafted, and they participated in with feedback. We typically will only have one or two defendants in the courtroom at any given time, and we generally get them out of there in about 10 minutes, so I'm pretty proud of that, that we've dealt with COVID in a way that's sensitive to their rights, but also to the the obvious effect of the pandemic. And with that, and with all due respect to my profession as a lawyer, I will be quiet and entertain any questions you all have at this time.
Thank you Judge Thrower. Does anyone from the Board of Trustees have questions for the judge?
This is Julian, I was just wanting to say, thank you Judge Thrower, your presentation was very eloquent and very helpful. I, I just have a question about the issue of not having as many, not having trials. Do you serve in these other reviews more as an arbitrator, or what, what would be, what would be your role in the non-trial reviews? I'm, I'm just curious how those work?
Of course, so not having a trial means that there has been what is colloquially called a plea bargain. So the prosecutor can enter into an agreement with the defendant, which ultimately is my responsibility to approve. And that may be something, something creative, such as a deferred judgment, where there are some conditions imposed upon the defendant where they have to essentially demonstrate compliance and some education instead of proceeding forward with a conviction.
Sure.
So I'm not an arbitrator, I don't have that kind of authority, I do have the authority to impose a sentence after a plea bargain has occurred. The right to a trial is obviously sacred in our courts, and I enjoy a good trial as next, as much as the next person, but the reality is justice is more often served frequently by alternatives to trial, and while I'm certainly experienced in doing them, I've just been impressed with sort of the sensitivity and the practicality in the Netherlands Municipal Court.
Very fine, thank you so much.
Pleasure.
Any further questions from the Boards, Board of Trustees? Hearing none, this is a action item, therefore we'll open this up for public comment. If any members of the public would like to speak regarding Judge Thrower's reappointment, now is your opportunity for three minutes, I think I see a hand up, I'm not sure if that's a request to speak or not, so please, if Kigo5965? Or anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this?
Sorry, that was me, I raised my hand internally, so just.
No problem. Anyone? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the board for any last comments or ordering Resolution 2029, reappointing Judge Thrower.
I'll move. Alan, second.
Miranda?
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Prosem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan.
Yes.
Congratulations Judge Thrower.
Thank you for the opportunity, I very much enjoy serving as your judge, thank you.
Well, and now we get to do, I think, a virtual swearing in here of you.
I have my script and I'm ready when you are.
Okay, very good, please repeat after me. I, David Thrower, do solemnly affirm.
I, David Thrower, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
Perform the duties of the office of municipal court judge.
Perform the duties of the office of municipal court judge.
Of the town of Netherlands upon which I am about to enter.
Of the town of Netherlands upon, upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you very much, take care, have a good evening.
You too.
Bye bye.
Alright, on that, we will move forward to our next action item, which is the Development Improvement Agreement for Peak View Summit Subdivision, and I believe our town attorney Jennifer Madsen will be introducing this.
Good evening, mayor, trustees, members of the public, Jennifer Madsen, town attorney. The agenda item is a development improvement agreement for the Peak View Summit Subdivision. And this, this development improvement agreement comes to you in a little bit of a different route. On July 2nd of this year, property owners Tom and Nancy Nicholson wrote a letter to the Board of Trustees requesting the removal of a restriction on transfers and conveyances that is identified in their subdivision plat. For background, the subdivision plat is a Peak View Summit subdivision in the Big Springs neighborhood. This subdivision was a minor subdivision that was approved by the Board of Trustees in 2004.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt here, I just realized you sent me a script, was I supposed to read the, the public hearing script before asking you to introduce this topic?
Um, yes, you can, you can do that, or you can pick up, I think, after, I think you probably covered the initial part of the script anyways.
Okay, yeah, I think I just forgot to mention that, the, based on the finding that the Board of Trustees has agreed to hear quasi judicial matters in a virtual meeting space, and in accordance with our telephonic electronic meeting participation policies, during the times of emergency as amended on April 16th, we are now opening the public hearing for the purpose of considering the Development Improvement Agreement for Peak View Summit Subdivision.
Okay, perfect. Um, okay, so let's see. This request, as I mentioned, it's, it's come to the Board of Trustees in a, in a little bit of a different manner. This is not a, an application that's covered by the Netherlands subdivision regulations, in other words, there isn't a procedure in the town code which would specify how the Board of Trustees or the Planning Commission takes care of this action and what the review is. It's not a request for replat, and it's certainly not a minor or major subdivision. Even though the request though is not covered by a process in the town code, as the mayor mentioned, this is a quasi judicial matter. It has been noticed as a public hearing and public comment is being provided. And I'll ask the deputy town administrator to briefly provide for the record the manner in which the notice of hearing was published.
So the notice of public hearing was originally posted in the Daily Camera on August 1st, and then as an additional posting was done in the Mountaineer on August 13th.
Okay, thank you. So the only thing that's being requested tonight is the board's consideration of this development improvement agreement. And what that development improvement agreement would do would be to remove the requirement or remove the restriction on the plat that prohibits the Nickelsens from conveying the lots to other individuals. Right now, there's four lots in this subdivision, and the Nickelsens cannot convey those lots without completing all of the improvements that are identified on the plat. So a little bit of background of what happened when we received this letter, I did some research to determine if this conveyance restriction is a common restriction that's used in other municipalities. And the reason for the research is that this is not a restriction or condition that's typically used in Netherlands. So when the Board of Trustees or the Planning Commission approves a subdivision, generally, there isn't a requirement or restriction that conveyances be limited until all improvements are completed. The way that that is typically done is through a subdivision improvement agreement like the one before you tonight. So my, my research turned up that other municipalities don't, don't really use this conveyance restriction either. This isn't a common condition or subdivision approval. And like I mentioned, typically what happens with the subdivision is that the developer enters into an agreement, and this agreement requires that the construction of the improvements be completed before building permits may be issued. One thing to mention that is that in this agreement, the Nickelsens agree to complete these improvements before they are able to get building permits for any of their lots. And the agreement is also recorded with the Boulder County Clerk and Recorder. What this would mean is that if the Nickelsens sold one of their lots, say they sold lot four, then that new owner, new property owner would also be bound by this development improvement agreement, so the new property owner would be required to complete any improvement on lot four before getting a building permit. So at this point in, in the review of the request, town staff asked that the Nickelsens provide escrow to cover the cost of the legal work incurred by the town. And this would be my work that was, is done on this development improvement agreement for the benefit of the town, I was not working for the Nickelsens. So the development improvement agreement would remove the conveyance restriction, but would require the Nickelsens and any subsequent property owner to complete all improvements that were required to be completed in the 2004 subdivision plats. And the improvements must be completed before they can obtain a building permit. I do want to mention that this should not be an opportunity for review of any other conditions that were imposed or could have been imposed in 2004. So at this point, that concludes my presentation on this.
Okay, and this is, there's now an opportunity for members of the BOT to ask questions specifically of our town attorney Jennifer. And I'm gonna kick off with, I've got two that came up. You mentioned that the other municipalities don't typically use this method of restricting via conveyance. Is that something they don't typically use currently, or is it something they weren't using 15 years ago when this was done? Is this something that's just kind of out of date, or?
Um, I, I consulted with the other attorneys in my office to ask if this was something that they were aware. You, you all may know Bob Widener, who's been practicing municipal law for 30 years, and he wasn't, he, he, this isn't a practice that he has used before. Like I mentioned, usually the development improvement agreement is used, and then frequently, or, or I should say sometimes, the governing body requires a monetary guarantee that the improvements be completed. And I know Netherlands has done this in, in other subdivision subdivision agreements. Required a guarantee.
Okay. Second question is, it's more about the, the actual matter we're looking at today. The improvements that they are being required to make, or were required to make in the 2004 agreement, and the requirements they'd be required to make in this agreement are exactly the same, right?
There, I, I did change some of the language just to make it more clear, the subdivision plat language was, I would say maybe a little bit confusing in parts, the other thing that was removed is, so on the subdivision, on the subdivision plat, it says that each lot must have access to and is connected to the town's municipal sewer system. That paragraph was removed based on feedback from town staff because of the sewer, municipal sewer not going to Big Springs.
The fact that it doesn't go there.
Yeah.
Okay. But all of the restrictions in terms of, you know, there's like all public improvements within the Peak View Summit Subdivision, including what not limited to being the street fixtures, drainage, all that is the same.
Yes, yes, that's all the same, and that is in paragraph C on page two
Right.
of the agreement.
Yeah, and so effectively, the, the only thing, only the only change by doing this would be to allow the Nickelsens to sell one of the lot. Lots.
Right, and then to encumber future property owners.
Right, it carries with it whomever buys it, but the only, the only change is that they, right now, the way it's written, they right now, the way it's written, they can't sell it, right?
Correct.
Okay, those are my questions. Um, other members of the Board of Trustees have questions for the town attorney? Anyone? Okay, uh, no questions from the the members of the board. So, um, next on the script that I have is a chance for the opportunity an opportunity for the applicant or their representative to present, and I believe I saw Tom Nicholson on the participant list. Tom?
Mayor Larson, yes.
Yes, welcome.
I'm with you. Um, thank you for a chance to present this evening.
I just name an address for the record since this is all recorded.
My name is Thomas Nicholson. Address is ninety Peak View in Netherlands, Colorado. We have been with the town since two thousand three when we bought our property. And in two thousand four, um, we found that we were in love with Netherlands so much that uh we hoped to subdivide our four acre lot into four one acre parcels, one with the house and three ensuing. And we did that with hope that one day we could build our dream home and our five kids could come back with their families and stay in the original home where we've had connectivity with um kind of our only base of operations for um really the last seventeen years. So though my military career took me away as I served um on active duty, we did have my mother-in-law Susan Hicks lived for fourteen years in our home, much of that was rent-free due to the vagaries of the economy. Um, and she was able to enjoy and host us back there for nearly every holiday that we could get airfare to return. And so it's um it's something that is near and dear to us having a foothold in Netherlands. Although the way things have unfolded with recent economic activity and the pandemic, our situation to build our dream home is not uh where we would like it to be. And so uh there is a chance to stay in Netherlands if we're able to have this accepted by the Board of Trustees. Uh, there is then options to sell and and at least pay off our home and perhaps um upgrade it so it can handle a little bit larger family than we expected back in two thousand three. And so I know there's um there's some comments that we were able to see publicly that we're concerned about many of the things that were brought up in two thousand four and um there were great collegial conversations to to look at what we ended up doing. And you know, part of those things um may get brought up as questions, but um what we ended up with was a conservation easement that we granted to the town to avoid excess density and spread out whatever might be built and um ended up with something that was in compliance with Zone Mountain Residential and um appears does address a little bit of the um dearth of homes available in Boulder County and Netherlands. So we're hopeful that the town would agree to this. What we think it does is actually solidify and clarify the steps that were actually on the plat so that they're understandable in what sequence that they're done, who approves them, um, the office that holds responsibility and the responsibility of us as developers or anyone else who should develop this. So even though uh we're asking for the conveyance removal, which seems to be an insurance policy to um really fit um ensure that all the items are completed, the development improvement agreement takes the place of what would have been sort of you can't sell this unless you do all these agreements first. So um with that, you know, our perspective is we've enjoyed living in perhaps one of the greatest spots for enjoying the views of Netherlands that there is. There might be one better just up slope from us on the the top of the hill to the south of town where the Wagners and Durkies live. But we've had peace and tranquility that perhaps it's time to share with uh one or two other families uh that might join the town. Depending on your questions.
Hey, Tom. Any members of the Board of Trustees have questions for Mr. Nicholson?
Yeah, I I kind of do. Um, I just pulled a statement or it was just to me, um, in two thousand and four, I'm trying to imagine the Planning Commission was assuming you were going to follow through on this subdivision in some kind of timely manner when they made all these requirements and they believe in their heart, they wanted some oversight onto what the whole units were going to look like as a cohesive subdivision where one person makes the roads so that each lot has equitable access to it and the septic systems were all done in a way that doesn't hurt other um the water lines put in. And so I'm just, um, wouldn't it make more sense for all this to go back to the Planning Commission to see if anything has changed in the past sixteen years for town of Netherlands? Because so much has changed with codes and um population and egress and um so many different issues in the past sixteen years have happened um since this wasn't
Is this a question for Tom?
Yeah, I just well, or for everybody, it's more of a comment.
Comment discussion later. This is specifically questions for the applicant.
Okay, well, Tom, why didn't you follow through on the actions and create this subdivision that you wanted in two thousand and four when you came to the Planning Commission?
We feel like we did keep up our commitments with the town and and had you joined us for those discussions, um, you would have seen that there was specific mention that our timeframe was eight to ten years. You can see that in the minutes that are supplied with the notes here. And so the town was aware of our longer timeline and they knew that we would have to save our money to be able to build that house. And you know, we also followed through on our commitments that we spoke during the approval process that we would um go ahead and do the conservation easement and grant that to the town. So we followed through on that commitment within months, um, I think even sooner. And so those things were met and you know, for a decade and a half, this has, you know, clearly been set up for us to build our house. And you know, for that time, we've had everything filed by the folks that professionally file things at Boulder County and we've been assessed taxes on those three properties, the two of approximately forty thousand dollars, which the town has benefited from in our municipal taxes. So, you know, we think that we not only followed through with our commitments that um we made when we did this, uh, we're we're really on a timeline that was only interrupted by extended service to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Are there other questions for Mr. Nicholson? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you, Tom. Now is the time of the public hearing for public testimony. Um, and because this is a public hearing, we break this up a little bit differently. Uh, first, asking if there are any members of the in the audience who would like to speak in favor. There'll be a chance, if you wish, to speak against this proposal, but first, uh, anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this proposal, now is your opportunity to speak for three minutes. Raise your hand or just start speaking up. Going once. Going twice. Okay, uh, now, if there are any members of the public who would like to speak against this proposal, uh, this is now your opportunity. Um, again, please either raise your hand or start speaking and you'll have three minutes.
Hi.
Oh, sorry, I'm going to mute myself, sorry.
All right, I think that was Doug Cox.
Yes.
All right, Doug Cox, please, your name, uh, tell us you live in or out of town and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, uh, my name is Doug and my wife Jackie here. Um, and we live right across the street.
We're right downhill from this property or from the four properties.
Yeah, so I don't know that I were necessarily against or that we just have questions. And and it's going to be more about how the impact is going to be to the neighborhood around the area, given everybody's uh current uh, you know, um, the 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 zoning of the area. So I'm thinking that, you know, I just need to know more about what the impact's going to be as well as, you know, the traffic, the sound, everything else that is already impacting the area.
All right, thank you very much. I think that's uh something I'm don't I want to give everyone a chance to speak from the public, uh, we'll come around to that during the board discussion and try to get some answers to that. Uh, other members, uh, Susan, did I see you jump on quickly? Susan Wagner, I thought I heard you start to speak up earlier.
Hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes, okay, I submitted two written comments. Uh, I don't want to repeat too much, but
Just name and name and
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Susan Wagner. I live at twelve three hundred Magnolia Drive. Tom made some nice comments about our view and we did meet him many years ago once. However, he never mentioned us and we were never notified by the town that he'd applied to subdivide that property. I have put in a question to the lawyer what this how what effect this has on the original approval that no neighbors were notified. Our utilities are in that utility easement shown on the plat. Uh, our property uh abuts that subdivision uh to this on the south border. So I raised a lot of my issues. Here's what I think, though, after reading through all the documents I could get in the public records, I have two main recommendations. The first is I believe this needs to be referred back to the Planning Commission. You have a a paragraph in municipal law that permits you if if no improvements have been made after twelve months, a subdivision can be referred back to the Planning Commission for review. And I initially was thinking, well, gosh, how do you decide whether you're going to waive this this restriction on conveyance, which is apparently unusual? The more I looked into the record, the more I understood why the board uh put this restriction. And I think it was to avoid what the situation we're in right now because, sorry, I'm speaking a little fast, but the Planning Commission, when they reviewed the subdivision, they had serious doubts that driveways would be able to be constructed to either lot four or lot three. There are a number of restrictions. You cannot build your driveway across another driveway. You cannot have more than two houses on one driveway. They didn't see any way that the landowner was going to solve this and they explicitly said this will be decided when the when a building permit is applied for, we will have a site review at that time. They made it clear, the chairman, Bill Martin, said he had not visited the property. He could not say what he thought because he hadn't visited the property, but this would be decided when a building permit was applied for. Then, when the Board of Trustees approved this on September twenty first, two thousand four, they not only reiterated their support for the restrictions on the plat, they added six or seven more restrictions. And many of these have to do with this problem of access to lots three and four. So my feeling is it should be referred back. It's been sixteen years, no improvements have been made. And one of the reasons it's important that building permits be applied for it, from what I understood from the record, and there'd be more maybe more that the Nicklesons or someone else can supply that isn't in the public record that I was able to review. But it would only have been at that point that the town would have determined that that was a buildable lot, number four. I have a concern if you waive this restriction on conveyance, that means the Nicklesons technically can sell any of those lots. And if lot four is not a buildable lot, it puts all the burden on the buyer, who then applies for a building permit and may discover he cannot build on that lot. And the Nicklesons put into this development improvement agreement, you may have noticed that the Nicklesons are not required to apply for building permits. They can sell the property. And then the subsequent buyer is stuck with this, oh, my gosh, I thought it was a buildable lot. It looks like a buildable lot. Another problem is your conservation easement on lot three. Number one, you state, Tom Nicholson stated, and it's stated several times, um, including in the abstract and other places, this has to be a buildable lot to qualify for an agreement with the town to make it a conservation agreement. It was never determined to be a buildable lot that I can see. There may be information isn't there, but this problem, they specified you've got to develop a driveway plan for three and four. And they said that the the owners have to either work with the planners to come up with the driveway plan or they've got to apply for a building permit and determine it. But they went ahead and made an agreement with the town, which I think is going to be called into question because
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, I know it's too much. So anyways, that's my recommendation. Well, just one last thing, I don't think you should consider waiving this unless and until they either have a building permit supplied for or some other way it's determined these are actually buildable lots.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else like to speak from the public?
Mayor Larson, we received a comment from Kathleen Chabai, so I'll just read that for the moment. Um, this came out of nowhere after being dormant since two thousand four. How how it wasn't discussed anytime prior to this public hearing is beyond me. They were constricted for a reason. No procedures are processed in the code according to this town's legal. On every other issue means it's unlawful. The town's mantra for the last ten years, and I question if there are four laws.
Okay, anyone else? Not hearing or seeing anything else. I will bring this back to the script. Does the applicant have any further comments or responses to the public testimony it was given? So I guess this is your opportunity, Tom, to respond to anything you heard from the public. Tom's still on mute.
I think I'm on mute. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, um, thank you. And you know, I appreciate the concerns um by my fellow citizens and and neighbors. It certainly is uh change and change is very difficult. And yet, you know, we're very diligent to follow rules and the very reason we're here asking for this is that we know that established rules are important and we followed them, met the town code requirements. And I think that Susan mischaracterized the state of discussion back in two thousand four. I don't think she was there, but I was there and there was confidence with the um the stipulation that the plan, once it's developed for building, the site survey is complete, then goes to an authority to approve. And the application for the building permit was looked at as a sufficient guarantee of the town equity at the time. And and there was really no uh concern that someone was trying to do something nefarious, which which frankly, I I don't think is appropriate to assign to anyone at that period. So that was done diligently. And also, you know, as far as the conservation easement or any of the lots being buildable, you know, if you were to just look to the north down slope on the other side of Peak View, um, the relief map of that terrain is is significantly steeper than what we're talking about. There are definitely options on how one might build on those two lots. And and I think they could be very tasteful. It's just a matter of allowing somebody's creativity and and excitement um to join us in the town.
Thank you, Tom. I'll bring this back now. It is an opportunity for the board uh to have any discussion or and determine what our decision for this evening will be. Opportunity to ask questions as well of a town attorney and get clarification on any of these things. Uh, so I'm just going to go down and uh work my way through the list of trustees and ask for comments and thoughts, starting with trustee apt.
Excuse me, yes, I have a question for our attorney. And I my question is, um, would would returning it to this planning commission for a review after all this time also be an appropriate option, legal option?
It it would be, it it is something that could be done, um, that is section seventeen dash ninety-four, review of previously approved plats. So this is a previously approved plats. And it's the provision is in the event no subdivision agreement has been executed. So there was no subdivision agreement with this plat approval. No construction of required improvements initiated or no building permits issued within twelve months after final approval of the plat, the Board of Trustees or Planning Commission may call for a review. Um, and then with the review, what happens is approval of the subdivision plat may be revoked or the previous approval may be modified to include additional conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Yeah, I have my question answered. I just want to see the rest of the board's uh
Yeah.
say at this point, um, you know, you can see which way I'm leaning right now.
All right. Uh, Jonathan, Mayor Pretend Baumhoffer. Still on mute.
Uh, I think I'm off mute now.
You're off mute now.
Sweet, thank you. Looking at the
Looking at this, I can see where there are concerns and desire maybe to go back to the commission, at the same time, I got for town staff, which is, did I hear correctly that he's been paying taxes as this, on this as a subdivision, or just for the four lots, and there wasn't any additional taxes he paid for it to be a subdivision? So first question there, if anyone can answer that.
I, I don't have that information for you, trustee Baumhofer, I would have to research it.
That's fine. I'm don't necessarily have an issue with this, my understanding is all we're changing is the ability for him to sell the land with the same from a builder's perspective, anything is possible, given enough time and money or creativity on the part of homeowner or the property owner. So if all we're doing tonight is approving his ability to sell one of those parcels or any of those parcels, and carrying over the same restrictions that were placed through the discussions of the planning commission and the BOT back in two thousand four, I would hate to see us drag this man through another that's back to the planning commission, when we're not really changing all that much besides who is going to be held to these standards and restrictions. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have an answer, town staff? Jonathan's question about the taxes he's been paying?
No, I don't, I, that would take, I'm not even sure how I would find that out, but because our, we have a new accountant and our town treasurer is no longer with us, I would have to probably reach out to the county and find out specifically what they're paying, unless they could show us their documents, I'm sure that they would be willing to share that information with us.
Yes, we certainly would, and I'm not sure about the difference between paying on a subdivision, but we paid on the four lots, so initially we paid on our house on the four acre lot, and once the subdivision was filed, the Boulder County Tax Assessor taxed us on all four lots, so that obviously increased our taxes for the subsequent fifteen years.
Thank you for clarifying that, so I'm definitely leaning toward, let's give this guy the ability to sell one of these lots, he's done his due diligence and kept all the intent of the discussions and restrictions that were placed on this in two thousand four.
Thank you, Jonathan. Trustee Taylor.
So I have to say, I was a little uneasy about this from the start, the plat looks a little more like a jigsaw than a plat. And I was a little concerned because reviewing the minutes of the planning committee meeting, it was clear that people were concerned about how to put in this driveway, which Ms. Wagner has, has presented as a concern. And I understand that these plots will be sold to someone who will have to figure out how to do that driveway. I would have felt a lot more comfortable with this if some of that innovation had happened beforehand, the innovation itself doesn't cost that much. It would have been nice to have seen a plan that, that mitigates these issues, so that knowing that someone buying plot number four would at least have ideas for how to make it buildable.
You're here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a little, that's, that's kind of my understand the Nicholson's distress, and I understand that they're spending a lot of money here that they would like to stop spending. And I understand they have a lot of land that they would like to be able to sell, and, and I certainly under all of these are actual tensions and pressures that they are feeling, and I sympathize with them on that. But considering stresses.
It's actually more than that.
You didn't include the presentation, hello?
I, I hate to interrupt, but I, I think some clarity might be valuable at this time.
Go right ahead, please.
Depending on how you read the plat, this non-standard restriction actually could keep us from selling our home. And during the current conditions, that's not just a convenience or a time issue, it could be a solvency issue, so so that's something that is of concern for certain. And also for the driveways, it's very clear and was spoken at the time that this was approved, that you could enter lot four directly, I mean, certainly, the house that sits just to the east was built the same way, it was just entered directly. And then the subsequent two houses, the original on lot one and the new one on lot two would share a driveway. But that might not be the best solution, and it would not be wise to prejudice what the build might be before someone's actually developed the site for what might be the most esoterically pleasing, and so, for example, the driveway had some discussion to lot two about, well, why don't you just go directly up there from lot one and don't cut back through the forest, and the answer was that the angle that you would look up at the hill from would have shown a scar going vertical from one driveway up to the house. If you notice, we have improved the lot by extending the driveway up to the beginning of lot two. You can't even see that from the town. And yet, it's a driveway that is as, as usable as a road, so it's, it's really, I think, in the interest of the town to look at this development improvement agreement as clarifying steps that were not as clear if you looked only at the plat. And really opening up the opportunity for someone to design something and go to the the approval process for the site, rather than trying to predict what it might look like before anyone's decided what they want to build.
So it sounds to me, Mr. Nicholson, like what you're saying is the creative solutions to the issue relating to driveway slope that was brought up in the planning commission, that creative solution has already been provided.
Well, I think to one of the lots, it's very possible, and you know, if you think outside the box, it may be that if we were to come back and do this, or somebody else buys the land, and they could say, look, there is the original existing driveway from lot one that departs to the west directly down to the road and is still a usable driveway that could be used for egress in the case of a fire, making both lots two and four buildable from the same driveway, having the least disturbance to any of that property, allowing two beautiful homes to be built that would be very low impact. And that answers the jigsaw puzzle question that you had. Why put that conservation easement right in the middle, well, so you don't have homes stacked on top of each other. We couldn't think for a second that we were trying to be a developer and have a major subdivision and do multiple homes to make money, we were simply trying to do something that was in tune with the land that might be suitable for our family.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Julian and Tom, for the clarification. Trustee Danforth.
Hi, sorry, I was on mute there. So looking at the aerial and the plaques and everything, it's clear that they're challenging lots. And, but I, you know, I do believe that you have a right to sell your land and do what you want with your land within reasons and restrictions that have currently been placed on it. And you said that you wouldn't be able to sell your property. And that, that means like all four of them together. You're saying you wouldn't be able to sell anything at this point because the improvements haven't been made?
I think that's subject to question, and it was actually spoken as though all four lots carry the restrictions, so we technically couldn't sell our own home.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a challenging case, but I, I do believe that somebody should have the right to sell their land, we shouldn't burden them with keeping it up if they need to liquidate. And, and so in that vein, I'm, I'm all for removing the conveyance restrictions, but keeping all the other restrictions in place for the improvements needed. And I, I have some concerns about whether or not they're buildable lots, but I, I'm not sure how or when you would determine that, and if that's the buyer, the person who's looking to purchase one of those lots has to determine if that's buildable and accessible. And I'm not, I'm not a real estate developer, so I don't know how all these things go, but just where I'm leaning is that is that we can remove the conveyance restrictions.
Thank you, Lindsay. Trustee Corvelin.
I am leaning towards it going back to planning commission and regal, going through every one of those limitations on the lot and going through it sixteen years later with the idea that this was never going to be a subdivision, it's just going to be four separate lots with nothing on it, because I feel like it was presented sixteen years ago as something entirely different than what's actually being presented now. And so it's basically a whole different situation, and I think because it's a different situation, as a precedence, we, we need to say, okay, you need to go back and present it how you want it, which is it's not going to be a subdivision where the owner develops it and creates the infrastructure, it's just going to be four lots, and so I, that's my leaning.
Thank you, Tanya. I think I had, I did have one other question come up in my thinking on this. The well, I guess it's, it's just more of a comment because the restrictions were placed on it by planning commission and by the Board of Trustees in two thousand four are unchanged in this. The only change is that the property owner would be allowed to sell not only the one, two, three of the, I guess, lots two through four, one, one or three of, one, two or three of those lots, as in addition to possibly being allowed or not to sell his house itself. That's the only thing we're looking at here tonight, any building that were to be put on this, any home that were to be proposed would have to then come through the Netherlands, the, the so there would have the chance then to look at things like the, the driveway situation and making sure it meets the requirements and the restrictions put on it by the Board of Trustees in two thousand four. I would like to get a little clarification from the town attorney, from Jennifer, regarding Mr. Nicholson's interpretation of the current conveyance restrictions, and whether or not that impacts their ability to, to sell their primary residence. As it's written.
I, I honestly haven't looked at that question, but if you just, if, if you read the plain language of what's stated on the plat, it says there shall be no conveyance sale or transfer of title of any resulting released land lot or tract of land within the Peak View subdivision until all of the following conditions have been completed. So maybe there's an argument that it's any resulting released land or lot, so if it's a, just specifically a lot, which would be lot one, where the current residence is, you couldn't, they couldn't sell that. So I guess I'm saying, I think that that could be true, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I mean, there, I guess the other thing I keep coming by is, I, you know, I'm on the, coming down on the side of removing the conveyance restriction this evening, and because it doesn't actually, in my mind, change the nature of the neighborhood or the potential development here. Because there is no change to zoning, no change to land use, no change to the number or type of homes that could be built on these lots. If we simply are making this change to allow the Nicklesons to sell one of them. And I mean, I think, I think it was trustee Taylor, or no, I've forgotten which trustee it was who said this earlier, but coming in, I was of the opinion when I first heard about this of questioning the need to do it, and questioning whether, what had changed and the situational changes, why would be for the Board of Trustees to modify. And having, you know, read the documentation, having thought about this pretty hard, and having now listened and asked questions of Mr. Nicholson, now where it is a case of the previous Board of Trustees potentially putting things a little or doing things in such a way that isn't quite in line with with goals, this idea of not being able to sell the property until you've done all these things is seeming to I would be coming down on the side of removing the restriction of conveyance this evening. I think that means we need to just kind of keep discussing this as a board, because if my little jotting here is accurate, I think that I believe at a three-three, half the board is interested in removing the conveyance, half the board is interested in sending this to the planning commission for further analysis. So I'm just going to throw this open to the board for those for trustees to make their case one way or another, or to put forth a a motion if you believe there are the votes in one way or another.
This is.
I want.
You go ahead.
I was just going to prompt that I'd like to hear from everyone, their thoughts on what the potential downsides are of doing this, if there are any, to allowing the, the sale of these lots. As Chris had noted, that this doesn't change zoning, this doesn't change the nature of the project, but can we see any potential negative effects for doing this?
I do, and that is setting a precedent of where somebody could come in with earnest intentions of developing a wonderful subdivision and I'm not using, this isn't what this person did, but they could promise certain things and and be like, yeah, in a decade, it's going to be amazing, and then twenty years later, they could say they're financially burdened and can't do it anymore, and and they, and they've already got this ten lots, or here in this case, four lots divided up that are just going to be then developed willy-nilly, and as a precedent, I don't like it, that's the reason I don't like it. I feel like you come to the board with something, and then you come to them sixteen years or something a little bit different, it just sets a bad precedent. That's my opinion.
This is June. I, I, as, as it should be clear, I was a little uneasy about this. And I understand that the Nicklesons are experiencing a hardship here, and that's important to keep in mind, but should have no bearing on the law. And what I, what I think is important here is that we are maintaining the same rules, we're just allowing the responsibility for those rules to be distributed a bit. I'm feeling more comfortable with that. The point is, I think, I think the key concern may be that, let's imagine, as Tanya was claiming, that someone comes to Netherlands and buys a plot like this, and the same thing happens, and this person is a sociopath and sells these unbuildable lots as though they're buildable and poor saps are taken advantage of. Well, the buyer beware, I admit, is a common trope, and we we live with that, and if you're going to buy a piece of land like this, you'd better be able to figure out how you're going to solve the problems that accrue with that land. And I'm starting to feel like the simple in how the responsibility is distributed is not sufficient to make this. I, I feel good that this may help the Nicklesons in their time of need, but I believe I am not making my decision based upon sympathy, I believe I'm making this really, the only thing that's changing is the Nicklesons are allowed to share the burden with potential buyers. So I'm leaning toward voting in favor.
I just want to say one more thing, do we want to be the kind of planning commission that has a reputation of being a buyer beware sort of town? So one would hope that things get vetted through a planning commission that the lots are for the most part. that the lots are for the most part buildable, et cetera. That maybe that's very naive of me to think.
I was just wondering if you can, here's, I apologize for my decorum with Tom and everybody. I'm very poor at this virtual meeting and lose the fact that we are actually in a public hearing. I'm glad to hear Julian's kind of leaning towards the, being in favor of this. I would just like to echo what the mayor had said. We're not allowing somebody to just change the, this development and develop it willy nilly. And while I do hear the argument for it being bad precedents, I think in this case, this is actually good precedents. This is cleaning up the ability for a conveyance and responding to large scale changes that are happening in our economy and giving somebody who has obviously done their due diligence, been a part of this community and had a residence in this community for sixteen years, the ability to feel comfortable and to have their property rights respected. We have a little bit of an issue in this town with making development so difficult, not for the home builder, but also for the builders that it becomes so cost restrictive that it is actually adding to our issue of house, housing affordability as well as rental affordability. You can't expect to be able to build affordable houses when you have so many restrictions and so many loop hoops that individuals have to jump through. So I'm glad to hear that we are leaning in favor. I just want to clarify to everybody, we're not taking any restrictions off of this development in terms of what can be built or how it's going to be built or having the checks and balances of our planning commission with publicly posted notices regarding the issues of buildability, uh, yeah, of if they're a buildable lot and potential issues with the driveway. As somebody who is self-employed in the construction field, I can tell you, there are ways to develop those lots. It is possible, and we have many, many talented excavators and builders in this town that would be glad if Tom was able to sell these lots and we had a new family that was able to come into our community. We constantly talk about being a welcoming community. And yet, when it comes to allowing folks to exercise their rights with their land, we seem to get really restrictive and force folks to jump through a bunch of hoops. So I'm just hoping that we tonight can make the right move and remove this clause and allow him to be able to convey these properties under the restrictions that was put on this development sixteen years ago. I'd also like to remind everybody that the board that put these restrictions in place is also the board that failed to have oversight of a $2,000 or what, $2.5 million biomass facility. And as a result, ended up glassing that facility, which was then reused by Boulder County Jail. So we also need to think about the fact that as volunteers and as board members, this has always been a volunteer board and that restrictions put in place may need to be reassessed. Tonight, all we're doing is allowing this all his land. So that's all I gotta say. That's Jonathan's little rant, and I make a motion to approve Resolution 202030.
I'd like to speak.
Are we? Well, we, we just need to either a second or not, and then we'll have an opportunity to speak on the motion. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, a motion to approve Resolution 2020-30 and a second. We can now have discussion upon that motion.
Well, I'd like to speak on the fact that I live right across the street from the.
Oh, sorry.
My name is Doug.
Oh, this is, it's a chance for the Board of Trustees to speak on this motion. I recognize that you're a neighbor with role in this, but you know, we, the Roberts rules of order, we don't really, there's no opportunity or place to open this up for further public comment. I have a, you understand? I just have a script for the public, since it's a public hearing, a legal script I have to follow.
Understood.
Do any of the trustees have comments on the motion that is on the table?
This is Alan. After hearing the clarification of what it is in terms of what we are approving and the fact that the individual lots still have to go through a planning process, I'm leaning in favor of approving that.
Miranda, which, Tanya?
I just want to say one last thing. I think it's really great. Everybody's very concerned about property owners' rights right now, when in other conversations, those were never even considered to be important, but I'm just going to leave it at that. That's.
Okay. Miranda, would you please call the vote?
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Hapt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
No.
Mayor Larson.
Yes. Resolution 2020-30 passes five to one. Thank you for everyone who participated in this, to the Nickelsens for speaking with us this evening. And yeah. Onto the next item. Next action item is a return to the water and sewer base fees discussion that we've been having for the last couple of meetings here at this board. And what we have before us tonight are, well, two ordinances, but they're really just the same ordinance basing to suspend the assessment of additional water and sewer base fees. So these are for those 22 residents that have two or three base fees being currently charged. This would then mean each of those will be charged only one base fee during the time we are discussing or researching our town's approach. Town Attorney, do you want to describe why we are, Ordinance eight, 11 and eight, 12? Or introduce this in any further way?
Yes, just briefly, I'll introduce it. So as a mayor mentioned, there's two separate ordinances in front of you. One is an emergency ordinance. That's number eight, 11. And it suspends the assessment of the additional water and sewer base fees for single family residences. The emergency ordinance would take effect immediately and, but it needs approval of all of you tonight. It needs the six of seven members of the Board of Trustees to approve it. The alternate ordinance is number eight, 12. And it does the same thing, but it would not be effective immediately. And to approve that ordinance, you would need a majority of the members present. Just quickly, also, it's a temporary suspension. There is no specified end date. However, the Board of Trustees may list, lift the suspension by resolution. Or you could also adopt an ordinance, new code language, and that would lift the suspension or, or revise essentially the the fee structure. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I had a question.
Yeah, I was about to say, questions from the Boards of Trustees, Tanya.
Um, since Eric was an integral part of this and he can't be here, I'm sure he would love to be here, but he can't be here. Can we table this for another time?
Tabling it would mean that we will continue to charge all those residences additional fees until at least beginning of September.
Right. So I, it, okay. So the first one's a unanimous vote and the second one was a majority. But I just feel like without Eric here for, to vote for the, something that he was in support of, I mean, it might even be hard to get him, you know. I don't know what, what does, what normally happens in these situations? If a person can't be there for something that they're part of.
Normally we, normally there's no change. It's, it's just one of those unfortunate, you know, it's, they weren't, they weren't able to be here. I don't know. I haven't had a chance. We just heard from Eric today that he would not be able to make it this evening. From the discussions we've had with him, my guess, my, my feeling is that he would want us to move forward at least attempt to, to pass the emergency ordinance.
Okay.
That would be my, you know, cause that would be the quickest way we can get relief to the individuals.
I get it. No, I totally get it. I just felt like not being here. And I'm sure with something out of his control or he would be here. So.
Yeah.
Didn't want to disrespect that. Okay, I'll just do whatever. If you, we'll continue on if that's how you guys normally do it.
Okay. Other Board of Trustees have questions regarding this? Not hearing any? Does anyone from the public like, would anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Waiting. Not hearing anyone? I see Ron's mute going on and off in a very fast fashion.
I have a feeling I need to call Ron. Is it possible to recall, do the public hearing in a few minutes? I can call him.
Sure. If you want to give him a quick call. Bring this back to the board for discussion while waiting for, for Miranda to give Ron a call. Does anyone from the board, anyone from the board like to speak either in favor or against the idea of an emergency ordinance so that this takes effect this evening versus a regular ordinance which would take effect in thirty days?
This is Julian. I'm, I'm leaning toward the, well, number eight, 12. We have a clear issue of a vaguely worded ordinance that does need to be fixed. And I'm working on that now. I'm hoping to be able to propose something to the board fairly soon, perhaps even in our next meeting. So I would lean toward eight, 12 in hopes that we'll have much more readable ordinance in the near future. I know I'm discussing this right now with Chris Peltier and we, I do not believe we have any serious disagreements and Mayor Larson has at least seen my initial copy, as has town staff. And I suspect that we'll have something to propose fairly soon that will be clear. So my tendency would be to move toward ordinance eight, 12 and address this without panic.
All right. That's, that's very good to know.
I'm gonna jump in here. This is Jonathan with Julian here. I listened to this discussion. I was absent for a lot of these discussions, but myself, I will probably vote no on eight, 11. I'm not necessarily comfortable with addressing this as an emergency. I was one of the board members who actually stated that I would rather charge more fee and justify basically that I would rather not let potential things that have been slipping through the crack, continue to slip through the crack and apologize that we have not been able to come up with the grant funds for adequate rate study. We're now have that rate study. It's in process. And so I am fine with suspending these payments in an emergency ordinance, but I would like to put a timeline on it that this is ends once we have the rate study data and that we address this issue again. I've discussed with Chris Peltier a lot, and I believe, as Julian said, this is a matter of potentially poor codes and interpretation and definitions. And in that, we have a lot of that because, you know, there's been a lot of turnover in town staff across all the years that our ordinances and code books have been written. And so there's a lot of variation and unique. I would, I would, I guess would be the way of saying it. Every lawyer writes something differently. Each town clerk writes something differently. So I'm in favor of voting on eight, 12 to suspend this, address the needs of the residents who have spoken up. But I am not in favor of declaring an emergency tonight and suspending this right now. I believe that there are some valid reasons that these base fees have been paid. And I believe town staff has ways to back up those justifications of their reasons. So I would just say you're better off to go for eight, 12 right off the bat if you need six, as we are missing Eric.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. I believe we have, Ron has called in.
I have.
Ron, please introduce your, and you have three minutes.
Ron Mitchell, all town resident. I do believe this to be somewhat unfair to those 23 people. I don't have a lot of the background that I probably should have, but I do think that they should be granted some relief or they wouldn't be complaining about it. I presume that they would still be paying the graduated rate. So even if some of those properties had an inordinate number of people, more so than maybe the facility was assigned with the incumbent water usage would be charged for at an increasing rate. So I would encourage you to give these folks some relief tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I'm gonna just open this up here again, if any other members of the public would like to speak. All right, I am not. So I'm gonna bring this back to the board. We've heard from a couple of board members who are leaning towards a motion regarding Ordinance eight, 12. Others, other board members like to weigh in?
Well, I have a question. If people are voting yes on eight, 12, why do they not feel like they want to vote for eight, 11? Just because it, it it happens thirty days sooner? Is the language that different when I look at it? I don't, not seeing that language is that different? Except that it happened sooner. Am I right or wrong? If someone could clarify.
I'm mostly, this is Julian. I'm mostly arguing that I do not believe this is an emergency. It's, it's a, just a matter of making the statement that this is an emergency when we have complaints from three people seems an overreaction to me. That's why my tendency is toward eight, 12.
Okay. So it's, it's more just using the word emergency than the actual fact that it's a similar thing. It's just wait, making them pay one more bill cycle perhaps.
It's precedence. Once you pass this as an emergency item, you set precedence that if you have enough complaints to the Netherlands BOT, they will pass an emergency ordinance.
Well, it's not about the amount of complaints because it really wasn't that many. It's about the fact that we've been charging people for months and months and months and months, and some people years. Something that we shouldn't have been. Is it an emergency? No, I wouldn't use the word emergency, but I would use the word immediate relief. But if it's a matter of, if it's just a logistics thing, it's like, yeah, I agree. It's not an emergency. The town's not on fire. There's very few things that are emergencies. But for people who are struggling to pay bills, the fact that they have to wait through another cycle, another bill with, there's very little talk about being reimbursed for their past payments. It just seems a little bit cruel in a way to, to not give them that relief of something that we shouldn't have been charging in the first place due to poor language and a poorly written bill. But yeah, I agree. It's not an emergency. Okay. But it is a kind thing to do is to relieve people of a burden that they have been carrying. That's my opinion.
Well, if we relieve those few individuals of that burden, we then put that burden on the majority of the community and listening to that.
But we haven't actually agreed to that because this was a funny. Okay. I, I mean, we're not talking about why this is money that shouldn't have been charged in the first place. It's like if I was charging a tax or something that, you know.
This is money that was passed by, they're being charged according to the, the ordinance passed by the Board of Trustees. Whether that is something that this current board believes is appropriate or not is part of this ongoing discussion, but they are being charged according to town code. Not something that shouldn't have been. By town code, they are being charged what they should have been and we are looking at modifying.
Why does this have to get passed on to other people? I mean, this $11,000 or whatever it is that's going to be short stopgapped doesn't necessarily have to be put on the backs of other people. I mean, this eleven thousand dollars or whatever it is that's going to be short stopgapped, doesn't necessarily have to be put on the backs of other people.
So I think that's a discussion for budget and that's a discussion during budget season. But I would, I would simply agree with Julian that I don't see this as being an emergency and I think it's open for debate. Still in an ongoing discussion among this board of whether or not these are accurate charges based upon the town ordinance. And like the mayor stated, that's a discussion that is ongoing and I believe will be coming back. So I would just, I'm comfortable giving, if I'm not comfortable in passing an emergency ordinance because I believe it does set a precedence and it's not the type of precedence I want to set, especially to my knowledge, this new board has still not been able to get together for a goals meeting unless that happened during my month-long hiatus. To backpedal and stop and not go about passing emergency ordinances to change the previous boards. Ordinances that were passed without having yet dedicated the time to sit all together as seven members.
Well, Jonathan, we spent a bunch of.
You have to let Jonathan finish. Don't interrupt him. Let him finish.
All saying we haven't talked about this, but we have actually spent a lot of time talking about it. He just wasn't here.
I understand and I did listen to those recordings. I'm simply saying as a board, we have not, we have to act as a unified board when we're on this board. And I would just like us to take a backpedal from jumping at ordinances. I totally am willing to engage in those discussions and I think there is a lot of value to this discussion. I just would like us to reprioritize our effort toward getting together to form goals. So we can work cohesively as a board to address these situations instead of having them pushed and then coming as not, I'm not against this. I am definitely against this being an emergency ordinance. So that's all I have to say.
Trustee App, trustee Danforth, either of you like to weigh in on this?
Yes, but I agree with um, Julian and Jonathan. Um, that I, I don't believe that this is an emergency and, and I do worry about the precedence of having a few people complain about code. Um, that's been on the books and expecting us to jump and um, pass everything as an emergency because a few people complained. I do think that this is something that we absolutely need to discuss. Um, this is something that we could provide that, that temporary release with ordinance eight twelve. And I do think we need to focus on having a timeline as well um, to discuss all the relevant code definitions. Um, everything that's, that's related to this. This isn't just whether or not we personally think this is fair um, or anything. And this is a, a much deeper discussion and it, I think we need the rate study. And we need to determine how we fill that gap in our budget of that is eleven thousand dollars. So it's, it's, this requires a thoughtful process, but uh, it's not an emergency. This is just something that we need to review and, and amend.
This is Alan. I, I concur.
Okay, do we have, um, does anyone have a motion they would like to make?
This is Julian. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number eight twelve.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second on the table? Miranda?
Okay, uh, trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee App.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumholver.
Yes.
Ordinance eight hundred and twelve passes unanimously. Alright, uh, that concludes our action items for this evening. And hang on, we have uh, two discussion items. Uh, first continuation or a, um, further discussion regarding long-term rental regulations. And I'd like to open this one uh, by just uh, discussing a little bit and I've had long conversations with town staff and our town attorney regarding the question about, uh, questions regarding potential conflicts of interest for um, members of the board of trustees who might have long-term rentals. Um, town attorney uh, has rendered opinion that uh, it's not necessarily a conflict of interest for uh, any of, anyone who has a long-term rental to participate in a discussion regarding the regulations. However, given our past history of the town and our standing to, longstanding tradition to sort of err on the side of com- um, caution. I personally, I'm going to recuse myself from these discussions and recuse myself from any fur- future actions or uh, votes on long-term rental regulations. Due to the fact that I am a partial owner of a long-term rental in the town of Nederland. We can't hear you, Lindsay.
Hi, this is uh, trustee Danforth and I have also been in communication with town staff and the town attorney in regards to conflicts of interest. And even though that she stated that there was no conflict of interest because we don't know the substance of the long-term rental regulations. Um, I do want to recuse myself from discussions and any further actions on long-term rentals. Again, just because of the history of this town and, and how it may seem to outsiders. So I have all the faith in the board to discuss this and, and um, take care of this in an appropriate manner. So I, I have recused myself from, from this discussion.
On that, I'm going to mute myself and hand this over to Miranda.
Actually, mayor, can I make just a little comment here so that it's, you know, clearer for people who are, who are listening? Um, and, and that is that, um, and this is part of the information that I provided to the board of trustees um, related to this issue. Is that the town attorney doesn't make the decision as to conflicts of interest. There's really nobody, no one other than individual trustees who make this decision. Or if the board of trustees as a whole believes that one member of the board has a conflict, then that issue can be raised. Um, but the town attorney isn't in the role of the judge or decider of conflict of interest. My role is to provide um, legal guidance and information as to what the conflict of law, of interest laws are. Um, and, and one thing I will mention here because it's unclear as to what the regulations are going to be or, or what would be proposed, it's hard to determine whether there would be a conflict of interest.
This is Julian and I would just like to note that I am not surprised that Mayor Larson and trustee Danforth have recused themselves. That is exactly what I would have expected them to do based upon what little I know about this. Uh, although I, I am a little disappointed that they are not going to participate in the discussion because I believe participating in the discussion is not governed by conflict of interest in this case. But nonetheless, uh, thank you very much.
Uh, and I, this is Jennifer Madsen. Again, I, I do want to add that um, the, the board of trustees rules a procedure and the conflict of interest state law is very clear that if a person recuses themselves for a conflict of interest, that person may not participate in the discussion of the matter, may not influence the matter and may not vote on the matter.
Thank you for the clarification, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Okay, this is Miranda. I'm gonna introduce the item if that's, okay? Okay, so before you is a long-term rental discussion about regulations. On July sixteenth, the board had asked town staff to look into how other municipalities handle long-term registrations and regulations. There's actually pretty limited information. Um, we did a reach to other municipalities through both our town manager and town clerk listservs. And I only heard back from the city of Edgewater. Um, and, and other research I had done was pretty limited. Which is why before you today, you're only seeing the city of Edgewater's registration code and the city of Boulder's long-term rental application just because there is pretty limited information. That being said, if the town of Netherlands wants to require long-term rental owners to register their property, there needs to be a municipal code change. Um, you can't require people to do any sort of registration without that code. Um, that being said, we can create a form and just ask long-term rental owners to complete it and register their home. Um, or we could do the, the municipal code change that would require them to do so similar to a short-term rental. So the question before you tonight is, do you want to continue to pursue making changes to the municipal code that would require long-term rentals to register their property with town? And then does the board of trustees want staff to develop a long-term rental registration form? If so, would you like us to wait until after a municipal code change has happened or would you like us to start working on that now? Um, with the recusal of Mayor Larson, I would speak that Mayor Proton Baumholver lead the discussion amongst the board of trustees as we move forward.
Okay. Uh, thank you for introducing this, Miranda. I would just like to open this up to the members of the board who have uh, I know this was a discussion during the time I was gone, so this might be a little bit of a rough road tonight. But I would just like to open this discussion up to the rest of the board members to hear their thoughts on this. I know when we passed the S uh, short-term rental regulations, it was part of the lab BOT's desire that we address long-term rental regulations shortly thereafter. So I'm glad to see this is coming back to this board. And with that said, we'd like to pass it off to any other members of the board who would like to share their thoughts on this.
Um, well, as I'm looking at the city of Boulders, I think we need to be some, maybe not quite as thorough as they are. Um, that seems pretty in-depth um, with the inspections and stuff. While I do believe inspection's important, I don't know if we want to go as serious as Boulder when we do this. Um, we don't want to be a huge burden on people. Um, we do want to keep those affordable rentals still available and those probably would not be passing too many inspections. Um, what I'm hoping to see is some kind of database that once people register, that, and we just need a techie person to create this. So once it's built, it shouldn't be a burden on town, where uh, anybody can non, non-anonym, it can't be anonymous, has to be non-anonymous, can contact a homeowner and let them know about something they might need to be aware of. Because I could tell you, two houses that blew up on my street, I could have let those landowners know years before this happened, that this stuff was going on. And they might have been like, yeah, I know, I don't care and that's fine. But in the rare situation where the landlord doesn't want those activities in their house, I mean, it would just be a heads up. And I think that's why it's good, it has to be non-anonymous because we can't have any vendettas or anything like that going on. It's gotta be full transparency. Um, or if there's people leaving trash out and the bears are getting into it and the land homeowner lives in California and they have no idea, I feel like there's just gotta, what I want more than anything, it's just a way to communicate with uh, landlords that aren't in the area who have no idea what's going on and let them know in, in a friendly, neighborly way. Um, and then I think this town would be CC'd on this. And so that's kind of my hope is develop some sort of system like that. So that um, we, there can be a little more transparency and people can know what's going on in their home. That's just kind of like.
I think that, I think what we're looking for is you could just ask long-term rental owners to register and kind of that good faith, we can put together that database. If you want to require them to register though, we're gonna need to, to change and, and add that to the municipal code. So I think we're just looking for direction on if you want to try just the good faith route.
Yeah, I think we should require, we should require them, just like you require short-term rental people. But I don't think we need to have the full inspection like I'm looking at Boulder. Uh, they've got, it's a little bit over the top. I don't think we need to go that route. But a simple registration, so there's a way to contact these people. I think it, it should be required, yeah.
This is Julian and I'd like to note that I agree with uh, uh, trustee Corvallin that, that what would be useful here would be improved communication with the landowner. And making that a requirement or not, that, that's an interesting question that I think we certainly need to discuss. We don't even need a computer for this. We can just use a, we can just use file cards. Uh, it, it really could be fairly simple. But uh, I agree wi- with uh, Tanya as well, that the uh, examples presented here seem fairly heavy-handed and seem to um, invade privacy in ways that perhaps are not necessary and not appropriate. But to be able to readily communicate with the property owner that something is going wrong and uh, possibly even to have the town play some small role in that intervention. I'm sure Tanya would have been happy just to know the person's phone number, but um, that kind of improved communication seems uh, all-American and very Netherlands-like and very appropriate. And now the discussion, I mean, I would hope to see a discussion regarding how far that goes. What kind of information we would gather on the owner, not too much, but enough that we can know how to get a hold of them when something goes wrong. It's that kind of absentee landlord that's letting all sorts of things happen and maybe even isn't knowing about it that I think needs to be addressed. And I, I think we probably could come up with a reasonable way of addressing that. And if we were to change the ordinance, I suspect it would be a fairly simple change.
Alan, do you have any input?
Um, I guess I'm, I'm kind of uh, torn on the, what kind of, what degree we want to uh, enforce examination of the property. Now, I, I think the main motivation to me is protecting renters and um, you know, so inspecting the place does put a burden on the property owner. Um, and I do own a rental property in Fort Collins and it would be kind of a pain. Uh, but on the flip side, I think we've heard from our constituents that there have been some real negligent landlords and they, the renters don't have any recourse. And so I guess coming up with a minimum standard, that, you know, you have to come up to a minimum standard to rent this property. And if you're not renting a place that's safe, you're gonna have to correct those problems. It's not an unreasonable. How often do we require that? Is it an annual thing or is it? Property change hands or renters? I'm not, not sure about that. But I think uh, in the community and, and on the board. It's, and what recourse does it have? So I guess that's a piece that I'm in.
This is Julian and I'd like to say that I, I agree in principle with what Alan has said. My, my concern is that it, it could easily be something we bite off and can't chew. In that, the way that that inspection is conducted is probably something the town couldn't afford to do. And if we were to insist that the landlord do it, there would be issues with conflict of interest. And so, yeah, it's an, it's an interesting, it's an interesting problem. And if we could come up with a clever way to allow for an inspection that would also play the role of protecting the renter, I, I think I could be easily persuaded on that.
So generally, I, what I'm hearing from the board and I believe the discussion before us tonight is do we want to direct town staff to essentially require them to register long-term enter owners to register their town with the property? Is that correct, Karen? And that would be writing a new ordinance because currently there is no requirement.
Uh, that's what Miranda presented to you all is that, you know, it's one thing to do it more in a voluntary way. But if you really want to make it a.
it more in a voluntary way, but if you really want to make it a requirement, then it would have to be changed in the code.
Well, I'm hearing a desire to potentially have access to the information for the sake of renters, as well as potentially neighbors of individuals renting long-term rentals, either for health and safety concerns, or also for the sake of the renters. I happen to agree with Eric that if we bite this off, we might not be able to chew it. I believe it was almost six, seven years ago, I wish the mayor had not recused himself for this purpose, because it was part of these discussions at this time. The pickle, we could get into requiring inspections, as well as the conundrum in terms of affordability of renters. We could put on long-term renters if we start to standardize safety and building inspections. I personally side on the fact that there are many folks in the town of Nederland who choose to live in houses that may not be up to snuff, but they have amiable relationships with their landlord, and there are kind of handshake deals that happen that are to the benefit of all parties involved. And if as the government start regulating standards in our renter, in our, and of our long-term renter, property owners who actually are long-term renters, we could create problems. Now, on the flip side, I'm also aware that we do have some landlords, and also landlords that do not necessarily treat their tenants with the most respect. And I would personally be in favor of trying to put out a voluntary registration of every long-term renter in town, and that way, everybody who is a long-term renter who's doing it to provide housing for folks shouldn't have a problem with that. And we will quickly see who does not voluntarily register themselves, and then we can start to address any potential issues from there. But I think we move forward with a good faith, asking for a voluntary registration of long-term renters and rental properties. This way, we don't burden town staff with having to write an ordinance when they're already burdened with a lot of other activities during this pandemic. And we begin this process with goodwill toward the public and toward long-term renter, or long-term rental owners, that they are renting because they're a part of this community, and as a part of this community, they have the good of this community in their heart. I think many and most, the vast majority, I would say, of our landlords in town are good people that take care of their properties and care for their tenants. And so if we move forward, asking for the voluntary registration will quickly identify who the problem landlords are, and then can address it from there. That's what I would have to say with this discussion, and would direct town staff personally, but I would like to hear from the rest of the board to ask for a voluntary registration of all long-term rental properties.
This is Julian, and I'd like to say that I think Mayor Proton Baumhoffer's suggestion is a good one. It isn't a huge burden, and it would reveal problems, if there are problems. If everyone voluntarily registers, then, hey, we got what we want. But if they don't, we now know we may have a problem we have to address over the long term. So I like that.
Yeah, I think that's a merit, and maybe, maybe the other way to approach this is, rather than, you know, upfront, assuming the worst and asking long-term renters to jump through hoops, we just have a process for renters where they can come to the town and have some ordinance that says, you know, if, if the place they're renting does not have, does not meet some minimum standards, you know, light, heat, sanitary conditions, you know, et cetera, they can come to the town and we have some way of helping them with the landlord, versus saying, okay, everybody has to register. We just make it voluntary upfront, and then give renters some clout in terms of, you know, if something is wrong with the rental property and the landlord is not responding, they have some recourse.
But what's the recourse? If there's no registration that they never filled out, there's nothing we can revoke from them. I mean, I agree with you, Alan, like, I like that idea a lot, and I like the baby steps idea that Jonathan Baumhoffer is saying. But like, what is, what possible recourse could there be on our end if there's no license to revoke?
Well, we would have to have an ordinance that states that, you know, landlords have to meet these minimal standards. If they don't, renters can come to the town and we can have some enforcement, which would potentially include a fine for them not providing all the basic things.
I mean, I've known people who haven't had hot water for six, eight weeks because of landlords dragging their feet on this situation, and I do think we need to have something like that on the books, because that's not cool. But I also still want to have a way that people can easily communicate with landlords that are absent. We can start with the voluntary and see how it goes. I'm totally fine with that. I like moving small steps anyway on these sort of things. I wish you guys had done that with the other stuff, but, so yeah, but I like what you're saying, Alan, because I do think some of these landlords, if the, it's one thing if the tenant isn't going to complain because they're getting a good deal or whatever, but if they're actually quite upset and they're paying $2,000 a month for a house without hot water, there should be some recourse. So that's kind of where we should maybe, should we maybe leaning more towards that? Instead of a registration, leaning more towards a way to penalize? How does that go?
Yeah, that's kind of where I would lean, because you know, you have.
Yeah, I would also, since there isn't a whole lot of appetite for registration, and that's fine, but I do, I don't want these people taking advantage of our residents.
Yeah.
I mean, a short-term landlord has to respond in three hours or something, and these guys drag their feet for months.
Yeah, people don't have heat, or they don't have hot water, they don't have water. I mean, there's.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
The sewer backs up into their basement.
Yeah, that has to be fixed, like, within a day, you know, like, yeah, I, so maybe we should be working more towards that goal of figuring out a way of penalizing those landlords that don't provide the basic services.
Yeah, and assume that most landlords, yeah. And most, assume most landlords are fine, and, and, you know.
Most of them are, but there's a couple out there.
I've heard that.
So, I'm not hearing an exact consensus, and also forgive me, it'd be my first time directing a discussion. I'll just open this up for public comment real quick, for the public to comment on this discussion item, and then we'll bring it back to the board for final thoughts, and then give town staff some direction on how we would like to move forward.
I would like to make a public comment.
Ron?
Have I, hello? One of the things that I think started this discussion was the fact that there were a number of explosions, what, a month or so ago? And the presumption throughout the discussion is, this is the landlord's fault. And the last time there was a go-round like this was when I had a long-term tenant in one of my properties, and he had paid a month's rent, and he'd been there three days, and he blew up the house. And immediately, there was a presumption that it was the landlord's fault. One of the things that you've discussed is only trying to come down on the landlords. It's the tenants in these cases that create things. One of your comments was, and I find this naive, that the tenants, if there's problems, could go complain to the town. I don't object to that at all, as long as the tenant has that right only if his rent is paid up. Because when Boulder first passed that ordinance, I was on the committee to help write the ordinance, and this was one of the things that occurred and proved to be very true, that tons of tenants will run in and complain to the town, or even create problems, make up the problems, break things, so they can go complain to the town and then come down on the landlord and not have to pay their rent. This, there's a tremendous amount of landlord-tenant law that is very complex. There exists in Colorado a warranty of habitability law that really isn't any good for the landlords or the tenants, and it has created a lot of litigation. And I think you would best be very, very careful trying to put the vast majority of the landlords in a position where they are being blamed immediately by the ordinance for doing things that are the fault of the tenant. And I've gone through these things over the 60 years I've been in that on time and time again. Yes, I agree, there are some bad landlords, but if you allow, and this is one of the problems I have myself, all the time, is people making anonymous complaints, taking up my time, town staff time, and they're pretty bogus most of the time. I'm not perfect, I make mistakes, but when you take an instance where the tenant has created the problem initially, and then all of a sudden, place it as the burden on the landlord, you're going to create more conflict in town than you really want. And whoever said you might be biting off more than you get to has a pretty good point. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Ron, you're probably right about those.
We generally respond to public comments, we just allow the public comments to come in, and then bring it back to the board for discussion. Just. Are there any other folks who would like that?
Yeah, Ron, though, because you've joined now, I'm going to get a lot of feedback, because I have you on my phone, too. Okay, I think we're good. So we have a comment from Kathleen Chiffey that says, since James Rathorn was forced to recuse from any discussion on short-term rentals and long-term rentals, Larson and Danforth need to recuse from the same, because they own a long-term rent. Towns apparent changes in interpretation of rules sound convinced as it did when the town changed the rules on the recall after we had successfully fulfilled the recall guidelines posted on the town website to get a special election prior to December 24th, 2019. Start playing fair.
Thank you, Miranda, and thank you, Kathleen, for those comments. Are there any other members of the public who would like to make a comment about this issue?
Hi, this is Kim, town resident. I guess, you know, having been through this rodeo for quite a while, I'm just curious as to why we want to, you know, treat rentals, long-term rentals differently than short-term rentals. As some people have mentioned, you know, the, our regulations for short-term rentals are quite strict, and, and, and come down to very minutia regulations, whereas you want to do kid gloves with long-term rentals. And I, I realize that they're not apples to apples, and I understand that, you know, as the board, you have, you know, determined that affordable housing is your number one priority, but, you know, treating us all differently doesn't quite make sense to me. So I would caution, you know, things be voluntary, and I know a lot of folks in town who are going to say, if it's voluntary, no, thank you. So then you're putting a lot on town administration to plead complaints, which is what you tried to do with short-term rentals, and we pushed back, saying, can't just take anonymous complaints, and, and do we, the, the, the town staff to, to respond to every complaint, especially anonymous? So I think that this discussion should continue. I don't think this is something that needs to be, you know, decided upon anytime soon. Without further discussion.
Thank you, Kim. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, unless folks are just trying to get unmuted, so to bring this back to the board for final thoughts and discussion on, do we have direction for town staff, or is this something we want to potentially table tonight and move on to the next agenda or a future agenda?
This is Julian, I'd kind of like to noodle on this a little bit myself, so the idea of tabling this for now would be, would, I would be, see, look upon that favorably. If we recall, the discussion where I was most interested was the one we were talking about helping people to communicate and not be anonymous. And I don't recall anybody on the board talking about anonymous complaints. Those are dangerous, we've seen this in business applications as well, where anonymity leads to major problems. The one part where I am concerned is the part where we were talking about inspections, and I'm back to the question of, there would be a lot of regulation around inspections, and we would have to pay people to do those inspections, and that could be very messy. So I'm a little concerned about that. I'm also concerned that, once we move beyond helping renters and landlords to communicate better, we begin to enter into ordinances that may fool us into believing we're solving a much larger problem. And I believe that, as I said when we first discussed this, the problem of houses blowing up is probably not a landlord problem. I believe it is a deeper problem. Helping landlords and renters communicate, helping them to resolve differences, I think that's a wonderful idea. But there's also a deeper problem, which is why people are trying to make drugs and blowing up houses. This is a problem that I believe the community can address more effectively than the Board of Trustees through an ordinance, although the Board of Trustees and the staff may be able to encourage resolving the larger problem. So I would like to, I feel very comfortable with the notion of helping people to communicate better. I begin to be concerned when we start to solve larger problems that I think should be solved outside of looking merely at long-term rentals, and that's all I have to say.
I just want to say one thing, also in response to Julian, about why are people growing, distracting in homes, that it's a community problem? I don't think anyone's ever going to solve that, but I do think that there might be a couple homeowners that might have wanted to know that was happening in their homes. And that's why I think you and I, we agree, we think there should be a communication system. I don't think note cards are good enough, I think it has to be something online. I mean, I have it in my head how I envision it, but that's another story. I don't, I mean, we could start with voluntary registration, that's fine, let's see where that goes. I think we're going to find, a very small percentage of people will do that, then we will have to come back and discuss this some more, because I don't understand why there was such zealousness towards short-term rental regulation, and there isn't any for long-term regulation, when a lot of the same problems exist. We've got tenants that leave trash out, that attract bears, we've got tenants that have parties, we've got tenants that explode houses, we've got landlords that don't fix things, that landlords that don't have the driveways plowed, all that. And I agree also with Ron, where there could be a tenant landlord dispute, where they might be taking advantage, and they'll stuff a bunch of hair down the drain to get out of rent. So yeah, there's a lot to figure out. Nothing can be anonymous in this, and we can start with baby steps, and I'm good with that, but we can't just let this lie. I don't think we're ever going to find out the real reason, I don't really, I don't really quite understand what Julian's getting at, as to like, why are people growing weed in homes? They're doing it for money, most likely. I don't think it's a big psychological breakdown that we need to solve as a town, but I do think that in some situations, the homeowner might want to know, because it's always pretty I don't, I'm not pro or against that, I am against, you know, obviously, home explosions, but I'm not against people growing. but I'm not against people growing marijuana in a home, as long as the landlord's aware of it, I would hate for that damage to be incurred on a homeowner, um, because it could be thousands, tens of thousands of dollars of damage to a home. And I've seen situations in my neighborhood where that was happening, and the homeowner had no idea, that, and this is none, these are not the houses that blew up, this is another house on Alpine Drive, and the homeowner had no idea this was going on, then went back to sell the home, and so much damage had been created because of these people, uh, growing and doing all kinds of activities where they, because they don't own the home, they're not doing it correctly, and so lots of damage, house went into foreclosure, then it became a real liability in the neighborhood, and so I do think that some of these homeowners do wanna know what's going on, and that neighbors, not anonymously, could be letting them know. And so I think we do need to create a system like that, I mean, I don't think it'd be hard, and that's where I'm gonna leave it.
So what I'm hearing is a desire to direct town staff to ask for a voluntary registration, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Miranda or Karen, that does not require an ordinance for the time being, while we, as a BOT, kinda, as Julian said, noodle over this, and it seems that the next discussion should really be focused on, how do we protect renters, or how do we provide protection for the tenants themselves, while also allowing potentially neighbors to keep landowners informed of potentially nefarious activities going on in their homes? Um, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, so what we would do is, we would come back to the board at the next meeting on September first with the application, um, again, just like a quick one-pager that just captures the basic information, get your approval on that, and then we would release it for people to complete voluntarily, and then we'll just continue further discussions, to your point about long-term rentals. That's my understanding of next step, so if that sounds correct, then I think I'm around the right page.
That, that seems like what I'm hearing. Got a question for Julian and Tanya, which is, you both seem very interested, would you be willing to work together with town staff to kind of, I guess, brainstorm kind of ideas? I've heard from Alan that, you know, this idea that, if there's health and safety concerns, you know, I've been a long-term renter my whole life, and I'm aware that while the town of Nederland does not necessarily have requirements, the state of Colorado does have Colorado renters' rights, and they are really strong in this state. Uh, as renters, we have some of the strongest rights of any of the states in the whole, whole country, so to say that they are without recourse is not entirely correct, because that is state mandated, and you can actually go to the state if you really have issues. As a town, it would be nice to provide a little bit more structure, because folks like having that tight-knit community and keeping things in-house, so I think this is a valuable discussion. Um, I would like to see more clarity of what the goals of these long-term rental regulations really are, it seems like there's a debate about whether it's the quality of the house in terms of standard of living, health and safety, or if it's about protecting tenants and potentially landowners, and I think there is a, uh, clear distinction between those two ideas. So if Julian and Tanya are willing to potentially work with town staff, I think that could help us to clarify for the next discussion what our goals are here.
Uh, sure, but I think to clarify, I think initially, we just need to start with a registration process, that's, that's where it's gotta start. If you wanna start voluntarily, that's fine, we'll see where that goes, but you can't do anything until you have a registration process.
Okay.
So Jonathan, this is Julian, I'm, I'm afraid that I would be doing a disservice to my responsibilities for the Marijuana Moratorium, uh, ordinances, if I were to take on another task, so I'm afraid I may not be able to play, uh, an active role in this.
Understood, you have taken on a lot of code-related issues, and for the town of Ned, that is time-consuming and complicated, so appreciate it. Um, just to move forward with our agenda tonight, Miranda, do you have adequate direction to be able to move forward with creating that application for involuntary registration of long-term renters that you will be able to bring back to us at our next meeting?
Yes, I do.
Alrighty.
That would be voluntary.
Correct, right, so I'll bring a form, and I would not, I don't want it to be longer than a page, that just asks for really basic information, and then to the database question, the trustee Corvallon, we already have one for short-term rentals that could be mirrored to capture the long-term rental information, so, um, I feel that we can handle that, and we'll bring that back to you on the first.
Okay, it's voluntary, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Miranda, this is Julian, and a, as you're thinking through that form, I believe that the conversation Tanya and I have been having, uh, would indicate that that form should be focused on how we, or a tenant, may gain, may get a hold of the landowner for the purpose of communication, and much information beyond what's needed for that would probably not be needed.
Agreed, okay. I'll bring something back to you on the first.
Alrighty, uh, then it seems like we can move on to the next agenda item, and I believe I'll be passing it back to Mayor Larson.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm introducing this, so I'll just introduce it.
Go for it.
So the next agenda item is the Marijuana Moratorium update, specifically with regards to the timeline, you all asked us at the emergency meeting on the eleventh to come back with a proposed timeframe for how we were gonna address the possible municipal code changes that are needed, so I ran this by trustee Taylor, and we agreed that in September, the town staff, town attorney, and trustee Taylor will study and review the regulations that, uh, to determine if amendments are needed. Then in October, we will present our, our findings as a discussion item to the board, and then based on any feedback the board provides, we will then continue to work on ordinance changes. Um, my goal is that, as an action item in November, we'll bring a proposed ordinance to the board, uh, and ideally it would be adopted in December, which means it would go into effect before the moratorium expired at the end of January. The question before the board is, do you have any questions or recommendations on the Marijuana Moratorium timeline that we have outlined? I don't know if Mayor Larson is there.
I was about to say, this is, this is Chris, and I just wanted to, I wanted to thank you and trustee Taylor for the work you've already put in on this. Um, I know I've seen some code language going around, uh, some discussion of that, and I, I think this is off to a really good start, and I think, personally, I think this looks like a very good timeline for this issue. Um, other trustees?
This is Jonathan, yeah, and reviewing it, I'm pretty pleased with the, see the progress on this, uh, pretty much my only concern was that we actually addressed this timely, and if we're gonna pass a moratorium, make it a priority to, uh, use that time to address the issue, so I appreciate the work, and I think this looks pretty realistic, as we're already kind of in a consensus of what we want.
And I just wanna, I wanna give great thanks to trustee Taylor for the fact that he's already jumped on this so quickly and made this, you know, we've made more progress in this moratorium than we did in the last one already, uh, so thank you, Julian, for the work you've put in already, and for volunteering to continue to work on it.
Well, I'm mostly working on base fee right now, but as soon as I'm done with base fee, I'm back into this, yes.
Other trustees?
My trustee Danforth, and I think that the timeline looks great, and, um, I, that was my concern with having our emergency meeting to pass the moratorium, that we wouldn't just let it expire without, um, actions, and so I really like the how we have this laid out, and, um, I'm excited to get working on it.
Yeah, I agree, um, looks really good, thank you.
Ooh.
I also agree, looks good, thanks for the work.
As this is a discussion item, I wanna throw this open to the public, if anyone from the public would like to, uh, weigh in on the timeline for the Marijuana Moratorium Not seeing or hearing any, bring it back to the board, uh, yeah, this looks great, Miranda, thank you, um, just realized since I was, stepped away from that last discussion, uh, we are not showing the right stuff on the screen anymore, there we go.
So really then, just as a wrap-up, the board can expect to see information from myself and trustee Taylor and town staff in general in October, at one of the October meetings. Or, yes, because we're gonna spend September researching.
Right. Alright, thank you guys all very much, uh, moving on to the next disc, uh, we'll be turning to our town attorney, Jennifer, to discuss parliamentary procedure.
Good evening, I'm gonna make this really brief tonight, I know that you all have been, um, meeting for a while, six o'clock on the work session, and that there's more to go tonight. Um, so in your packet, there was, uh, discussion on tips for the proper procedure to make motions, and I laid out a couple of common motions and, and mistakes with those motions, um, so if, when you have a chance, um, read that over if you haven't already, I can answer any questions that you have tonight, um, but I'm not gonna spend a long time with the presentation for you. I just wanna state briefly that the reason for good motions, um, proper motions, there's three reasons for that, um, to keep in mind. First is that you wanna make sure that the other members of the Board of Trustees understand what the motion is, um, you don't wanna have a situation where the next day after the meeting, um, when you find out, you know, there's discussion of, of what happened, um, you don't wanna be in a position where you're thinking to yourself, "That's not what I thought that I voted on." So, um, first reason is to make sure that everybody is on the same page as to what you're voting on, and the mayor does a good job of summarizing and clarifying what specifically the motion is, um, but that's, that's one of the, the reasons for proper motions. The other reason is you wanna make sure that staff has direction and understands the action of the Board of Trustees, you don't wanna be in a position where staff has questions, um, two weeks a month from the meeting about what the board specifically requested. And finally, um, good motions are helpful for the minutes of the board, and you wanna make it clear in the minutes, um, with good motions as to what the action is of the board, so that when those minutes are reviewed, years after the fact, other people can understand what the action of the board was. So that's, that's what I have, um, if we, if there's interest, we can discuss this further at another meeting, or I can also answer any questions that you have tonight.
Anyone on the board have questions for Jennifer? About the esoteric of, uh, motion to reconsider and motion to refer and...
This is Julian, I just wanted to say, Jennifer, thank you very much, that's a very informative write-up, and I appreciate it, I'll, uh, be taking it in, I'll be taking it to heart.
Okay, good.
And I will say, I think in the years I've been on the Board of Trustees, I think we have actually had all of these motions made at one point or another, in accordance with the Roberts rules, and sometimes we've had to go quickly look to see exactly what it means and how to work, make it work, but these are definitely, uh, tools that have been used by Board, by Board of Trustees at various points, uh, over the last decade.
And, and that's, um, one of the reasons that I'm here, is to help you through these processes, so if there's ever a question during a meeting as to how, how a motion should be handled, um, that's, you can direct that question to me.
And I didn't, I, you know, I remember, I read through what you put in the packet, but as I recall, there are certain motions that require majority, certainly require supermajority, and certain that require the, the seventy-five percent. Is there...
Yes, and, and that does depend on, um, sometimes on what the specific issue is, so for example, an emergency motion, um, emergency ordinance requires the free-force majority, um, yes.
Okay, any other questions from the board? This is a discussion item, so I'll throw this open to the public.
Actually, it's, it, it, I'm sorry, it was noticed as informational, I, I checked discussion, so...
It is, you're right, I was looking at the, the top of that, it is on the informational, so, thank you, Jennifer.
Yes.
Alright, well, thank you very much, um, I think this is all, this is material that's provided in the, uh, sort of welcome packet to trustees as well, sort of the, you know, as you, when you're elected, if there, there's further information in there, and we, as a board, tend to just follow straight Roberts rules of parliamentary procedure, so you can also Google it, if you have, uh, for that, or looking into some of the quirks of it.
Or you can buy the four-hundred-page book.
I'm sure that's an inexpensive book, too, right?
Yes, yes, for sure.
Alright, thank you, Jennifer. Uh, well, we are done with our, uh, the bulk of our action discussion information items, uh, the only things remaining are our staff reports and trustee reports, so I will hand this over now to our town administrator, Karen Garrity, for, uh, the town administrator report.
Well, good evening, mayor and trustees and the public and other staff who are on the call, I know we're three and a half hours into meetings this evening, so I will be brief, I'll be providing both my report as well as the town treasurer's report, so I'll just go from one into the other. For stop accolades, I'm just calling out again, we talked about it last meeting, the great success of the town cleanup day, and special kudos to Nikki Dunn, who organized it, and it was a challenge to organize it during the pandemic, and to keep it safe, and we served one hundred and nineteen households, which is only one less than last, last year, so we felt it was a resounding success, and I wanna give honorable mention to Mayor Larson, because it was great to have a member of the Board of Trustees present and volunteering as well, and also Miranda Fisher, who provided, uh, really important administrative support to Nikki, so it was a great success. Also wanted to mention the Black Lives Matter, um, update, which is regarding the, uh, series, a ration, a racial awakening training that, uh, the churches in the area have, um, partnered on, and I was able to attend, I know Miranda stayed on as long as she could as well, uh, prior to, uh, board meetings she had to attend, but it was really an amazing training, it was a great discussion, and the main question being asked was, "How do we stop identity-based harm?", and the presenter was Reagan Byrd out of Denver, and she just did an amazing job. I won't go through the highlights of the training, but I will say that, um, we were allowed, if anybody, anybody on the Board of Trustees would like to have that recording, it is three hours, I will tell you, it's very intense, but very amazing, if you would be interested in it, just email me, and I will send you a link to that training. I won't talk about RTD, because I know that, um, trustee Corvallon's going to, since we're both on the same committee, I think everybody's probably following what's going on with COVID in the, uh, county, state, and beyond, uh, basically, the governor did extend the mask order for another thirty days, we are fortunately seeing some reduced numbers in both the county and the state, the county actually, um, let me pull up the report, I think is averaging two-point, two-point-four or something like that cases over the last five days, so we are... So we are seeing some, some drops in those numbers. As you know, Boulder Valley School District opened, but mostly doing everything online. CU has opened their campus to the students who are arriving. They've started to do testing. Their first round of tests was for one hundred ninety-two kids. And so far, they've, they've had one confirmed case. They're isolating students who do have confirmed cases to hotels in the area. They've got several contracts in the area, so that's how they'll be dealing with that. So you know, we continue to monitor it and attend meetings with the county public health, health organization as well as other partners in the area. As far as the treasurer's report goes, probably the biggest news is that we finished audit and it has been posted to the state site as required by law. It's also been posted to the town's website and we encourage the public to visit it either by accessing it through the link in the recording or just by going to our website. And all you have to do is search twenty nineteen audit and you'll find it. We are working with the departments in the twenty twenty-one budget process. We will not be holding a public share at this year. We haven't had very good turnout. We only get a handful of people a year who come. And with COVID, we thought it might even be less. So we're still available. We, of course, will be posting the draft budgets. We will be having public hearings. We will post the final draft budget and take comments from the public. The public will still be very much involved in the process as much as they would like to be. Our first work session related to the budget for the Board of Trustees will be Tuesday, September eighth. I know you've been all given the calendar, but just as a reminder, we'll, we'll start those, those work sessions, September eighth. We aren't quite done yet with the July financials, so when they're done, we will send them to you. And I will just say Rita Six has been really, you know, she hit the ground, ground running. There's a lot to learn about our processes and our systems. And she's certainly drinking from the, from the fire hose right now. But really a delight to work with her, her years of experience as an accountant is just shining through for us. And I know that it won't be long and she'll be right in the groove. And we look, I, I really look forward to working with her and you'll, you'll all be so pleased as you get to know her as she's with us longer. So that's all I have for the, my report and then the treasurer's report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? I just want to chime in and also I see Rita has been sitting here patiently this entire time online. So I just wanted to welcome Rita to the town of Netherlands. I had a chance to meet her several times at town hall. Really looking forward to working with her and encourage all the other trustees to, to stop by town hall and meet Rita at some point. Miranda.
All the trustees have mail here, so that's also a great time to meet Rita. Clog for your mail. Okay, so town hall updates. If you haven't been in town hall recently, we moved the visitor center over temporarily. And Sharon Ferguson, who's the visitor center manager, made it look fantastic in here. Because we now are that hybrid though, and we're giving information to the visitors who come here. We're now open Monday, Wednesday, Friday from ten to two, which are the hours in which Sharon is present to assist them. Town staff is available Monday through Friday, nine to five, but all the other times outside of that, Monday, Wednesday, Friday would be by, by appointment. And so we ask that people call and leave a message and we'll get back to them. Over the last thirty days, I've processed eleven new and renewed business licenses. I don't really have any liquor or marijuana updates, obviously with the moratorium. I do have masks and some additional hand sanitizer for businesses. So I'm going to send an email to them tomorrow to let them know they can come pick those up. Continuing to have a lot of Chiquita Park rentals through exercise classes and bike clinics, so that's really exciting. Advisory boards and commissions. There was an announcement that SAB and Garrett did get awarded fifty thousand dollars for the charging station grants. Those were the ones that he presented to you all a few months ago. So we're really excited for them and to be able to increase that electric vehicle infrastructure for us. So congrats to SAB. I see that Melody's on. It's very exciting. We also have ProSAB who's going for the GoCo Resilient Communities Grant, and we do plan to present that before the board in a September meeting. But we're looking for some feedback on it. We are pursuing the Barker's Meadow Park plan with some adjustments. Really, we're looking to work on being able to spread out and restore some natural areas along Barker and do some of those pocket parks. And then also, we'd like to seek funding to refit the bathrooms at Chiquita Park so they can meet COVID requirements and be touchless services. We are in touch with GoCo and they, we have a call with them on Thursday and they feel very confident that we could be awarded those funds. It's a little bit different than a normal GoCo grant in that they, they want to give funds out. They want to come up with creative ways to help communities recover from COVID. And so I'm looking forward to continuing to work with ProSAB and Chris and Public Works on getting that grant done. When I wrote my report, I had fulfilled three core requests. Since then, I received four more, and so I've completed six out of seven core requests in the last thirty days.
Any questions?
Miranda, this is Julian. I'm very excited about the GoCo grant. That's very cool.
Yes, so we hope to, we, we feel confident we can come before the board on the first of September to talk you guys through our plan.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Miranda. Don't believe the marshal is on.
He might be a caller.
Oh, he's one of the call-ins. Okay, sorry about that, Marshall.
Good evening, board. I know my report's pretty lengthy since we've missed a lot of time and I haven't got to talk on a couple of other occasions, so I just want to try to bring everybody up to speed what's gone on throughout June, July and basically all the way up till the end of last week's date. Most important things, definitely want to recognize and reiterate all the work that staff put in for the Alpine incident down there. That was pretty much twenty straight days from incident to almost twenty straight days to time of arrest. So a lot of work, Sergeant Fine Levin, still working on that as of last week, submitting warrants to search electronic information. So we'll see what we get back from that. That could be many, many months out before the, those searches are complete and what we actually get back from that. Just going to hit on a few more highlighted things. I know everybody's time's valuable. Important is the Senate Bill two seventeen update. We did complete our mandatory training that had to be done by the first of September. Deputy District Attorney Cotterina Booth came up last week and they had a PowerPoint that we went over. As you see in here, the required data collection, we've already started that and you'll see the exact specific information that we're supposed to be collecting on all contacts of people. I'll just throw out to you guys questions specific to any of this stuff. There's obviously a lot of major crimes that kind of went down that are, I would say, not typically Netherlands style that we get. Our case report numbers are down, but our incidents of bigger crimes are up. So which kind of driven our case report numbers down, if that makes any amount of sense. So questions to the board or for the board, from the board?
Any questions for the marshal?
Thank you.
Keeping really busy. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Julian?
I was just going to ask if the marshal had any theories regarding the changes in the, the types of issues they're having to deal with.
You know, I would say not, not speaking relative to the Alpine incident because that guy's lived here for many years. So a lot of these other ones are outsiders coming into town. The felony menacing at the covered wagon, that was a outsider. The assault near the footbridge was a new person that had moved to town. Don't know, don't have any specifics about the reported felony menacing from car to car. That was just reported to me cold and I didn't have any information to go off of, but I'm, I'm sure it happened. So in general, we're just seeing outsiders, you know, the kayakers, those are not Netherlands people. And as we all know, the town is full every, every day feels like a Saturday here now with the amount of people in town. I think people just want to be out of the city and you know, be out of that fray right now and get into the mountains and get out of the, the heat and maybe some of the nonsense that's going on down there. So that just, that's my assumption. You know, the DUI crash, that, that wasn't a local person that was involved in that or, you know, that caused that crash. So, you know, I don't know. I'd just say more so it's just the influx of people, I would.
Sure. Well, it's not yet a trend. It'll be interesting to track it and make sure it doesn't become a trend.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the marshal?
No, I just want to say thank you. Every day I hear sirens and there's so much going on and I know you guys don't have extra staff, so. Thanks so much.
You bet. You know, I can, some of the, a lot of the sirens you guys are hearing in general are going either to medical calls or rescue calls. Boulder County Sheriff's Office is just off the hook busy with rescue calls. In Brainerd Lake, I mean, they went to one this morning that ended up being a suicidal person up there. They, we went to one last week or the week before up at the July campground area. So it's, it's almost a daily thing. It feels like with the amount of, again, the amount of people that are leaving the city, they're coming to the mountains, they're recreating, they're getting lost, they're getting injured. Or whatever's going on. So a lot of that stuff you're hearing is not necessarily Ned PD doing that. It's medical related or rescue related. We, we try not to run our sirens if at all possible.
Well, regardless, thank, thank you guys and thank all, all the rescue guys or women, sorry, people.
I'll just chime in and add, yeah, thank you guys so much for all you guys do and I really hope we can get together at some point very soon and have a nice swearing in ceremony and meet new Officer Gillen. I know he's been with us now for almost two months, but it'd be great to meet him.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, board. Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of things I want to add to my report. First of all, the town's utility supervisor is, is leaving my team to, to move and be closer with our family. And so she's been working with me for over seven years. It's been a really valuable, great asset to the town and has done so much with me and, and for the department. And will be greatly missed. So Nicole, so that's one thing. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was I did present the Safer Main Streets Initiative grant to the DDA that I presented to you at your last meeting. And it was received well and they approved submission, funding the the match and submitting the grant. And so I've submitted the grant and we'll cross our fingers for funding on improving crosswalks in town. So that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions on, on my report.
Thank you, Chris. We're gonna, we're gonna miss Nicole.
Yes, we will. I certainly will.
I'm sure. Anyone have any questions for Chris? All right. Thank you very much. Dawn.
Oh, my report is in your packet and in it, I also have a couple of additions to that. First, like Chris, I am losing my partner in crime, Carol Handler, our longtime office manager at the community center. Formerly submitted her resignation last week. She's been planning her move back to her home state of Massachusetts for quite some time, but now it's a reality. The good news is that we have hired Kurt Avandroth, one of our part-time staffers, has been able to move into that position and that will make the transition much easier for us. Since he's been with us for quite some time and before he was employed, he was a volunteer. So we say for well to Carol with reluctance and she's been incredible asset to the community center and we welcome Kurt. I also wanted to add the fact that obviously we're in incredible fire danger around here these days. And I just want to encourage everyone in the community as well as the board to reach out to your, your circles. Make sure everyone's registered with Everbridge or Rebirth nine one one in the county where they live. That they have a communications plan ready to go with their circle and a to-go bag ready to go. The faster if there were to be an incident and we were to be evacuated, any part of the peak to peak, the sooner we get out of the way as our first responders, the sooner they can do their job. So that's what I have to say on behalf of community emergency preparedness. We have staff are meeting with Jocelyn from Office of Emergency Management tomorrow to make sure we're all on the same page with what the community's doing and what they expect of us. So one thing we do know is the community center will not be a sheltering place in the traditional way we're used to it being. There, they have no plans to shelter in a mass shelter during the COVID. So they will have, come up with alternative plans and we will, at the time an evacuation is called, they will also direct people where to go, look to the town website, look to our social media sites, if that should be a necessity. So that's all and I am available for questions by email, phone or right now.
Thank you, Dawn. Anyone have any questions for her right now?
This is Alan. Dawn, I noticed you're open now. The fitness center is open. And you, you're not using a reservation system anymore. I'm wondering how heavily uses is in terms of trying to maintain social distancing and masks and that kind of stuff.
It's been working out very well. We are using the reservation system, so we're not requiring it. We're encouraging it and those people are given priority. But we do have, we have allowed drop-ins and it's been working out really well. We're not, you got to remember, we're not the, you know, Mapleton YMCA. We don't have hundreds of people coming in at a time. We only have, you know, tens coming in at a time at, at the busiest. So it's best working out. We're limiting it to three per area. And it's, it, it has just fallen into place. And if we have more that, like everybody, say we have five that want to be in the weight room at one time, people are either willing to wait or go to a different area to workout while they wait for that area to open up. So folks have been very compliant, very cooperative and very thankful to be back.
That sounds good. Thank you. I'm sure the community really appreciates it.
Any other questions for Dawn? Well, thank you very much, Dawn. And I look caring as soon as we know kind of what, what evacuation plans would look like in the case of urgency. I think it would be great to get that information out as soon as possible so that if worse happens, then people aren't immediately heading to the community center out of habit.
Well, the, the situation, reality is they're conditioned to go there, so people are going to go there. And we're prepared for that, but reality is Um, and we're prepared for that. But reality is that we don't know what the situation might be. We can't even, we can't, we don't have our crystal ball unfortunately. So, you know, that is something we just have to all be, be aware of, that be prepared to get the direction from the people who tell us what to do. And staff is part of that group. We don't know. So we're waiting to hear as well. So we will take our directions from the professionals. So thanks.
All right. Moving into trustee reports, I'm gonna keep this tight because we're, uh, up on 10 PM here. The only thing I want to highlight is I attended the signing event for the Forest Health and Wildlife Risk Reduction MOU last week. Uh, it turned out it was a, it was a big event, about 40 people. We had everything from scientists from CSU, water managers from, uh, Longmont. Um, the, uh, con, water conservation district from Left Hand, what Left Hand Water Conservation people. The Forest Service, the county, the state, you know, State Department of Wildlife, a lot of people there. It was a great event and really good energy coming out of that. Um, I think everyone's really excited that there's going to be progress made in a collaborative way and looking forward to taking those next steps with them. And, uh, yeah, it was just a really nice spent, really well attended and, uh, beautiful day up here for it. Um, so, uh, Jonathan, you have anything?
Uh, nothing much. Been out of the picture for a while. Did attend the DDA meeting as Chris had mentioned. We did approve the, uh, matching funds for that project. Uh, in addition to that, the BOT should be aware that the DDA did vote to create their own EIN. Um, and pending the discussion that I'm still kind of reading the emails on with Karen, maybe diversifying some of their funding and looking into, um, reinvesting that for potential higher interest. So just for this board to be aware of that, um, if you have input, it would be worthwhile to send that to the DDA and that I believe there is potentially a larger discussion when these things come before the BOT.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Alan.
Don't have a lot to report, just to say that Garrett McCandless doing a great job on the grant front. As you heard, we got the grant for the charging station and related, uh, electricity, uh, infrastructure from Excel. He's got the grant out for, um, zero waste. And we're looking at applying for a grant for, to put solar panels on the, uh, town facilities. And we're still waiting to hear back on, uh, low-cost solar energy for low-income folks from the county.
All right. That's great. I was just seeing a county doing some work with that, uh, solar garden for their low, low-income people. So, uh, the city of Boulder. So I'd really be interested if the county can help us get that up here as well.
We have potentially 40 people that would qualify because they're already getting, uh, assistance with their bills. Um, and it didn't sound like we'd get all 40 in the program, but, uh, you know, we'll see how many we can get because it's going to be countywide.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Eric is of course out, but, uh, has been busy with ProSAB.
Her computer actually just died. So her report's in the packet. And if you guys have questions, she asked that you reach out to her directly.
All right. And, uh, last but not least, or no, Lindsay.
Uh, well, I actually don't have anything to report. So.
Uh, Julian, you want to cut?
So I, I have apparently picked the cushy commission because the last one was quasi judicial and, uh, Miranda tells me tomorrow's is quasi judicial too. So I left out, I get to work on ordinances.
Yeah, there will, there will be quasi judicial matters before the PC for probably the next three months. So.
Oh, great. All, all the more time for marijuana ordinances.
We're going to see some more code work to do there, Julian.
Yeah, yeah. So great.
All right. Uh, that is, uh, the end of our agenda for this evening. Is there, unless there's any other business people would like to bring up in the last few minutes? Barring that, if anyone would like to take that training they heard from our town attorney to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I second his motion.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn from trustees Baumhofer and Taylor.
Uh, Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
See Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yeah.
And no vote from trustee Corvallon. She
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you guys all very much. And thank you to everyone who called in for this long meeting this evening. Uh, see you all soon.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Thank you.